Good afternoon, good evening. North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you to our city council meeting this evening and our redevelopment agency meeting. So we will start the meeting and then we will adjourn for a second to go to redevelopment agency meeting, then we'll come back to the main city council meeting. There are four public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning and the end of the redevelopment agency meeting, and one at the beginning and the end of the city council meeting. If wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards located on the table outside the main entrance where you came in. And on this podium rail right here, there's a blue card, and we ask that you sign your name and what issue you'd like to speak on. Please give your card to city clerk, Ms. Jackie sits right there in front of me to my left. And when we call on you to speak, we request that you limit your comments no more than three minutes and that we avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with Nevada open meeting law?
Mayor, we are in compliance.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have the opportunity to have an invocation given by a very special person in our community, Rabbi Shalom Walinsky. Now, if I said that wrong, you straighten me up, okay? From Shabbat north Las Vegas, it's our newest Shabbat in the valley, and it's happens to be our first north Las Vegas, I believe. Following that, we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. While we're still in rise, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by our mayor pro temp, Richard Churchill. Please rise.
Almighty God, stand before you in prayer. Look favorably upon the mayor and honorable members of the city council of our great city of North Las Vegas, and so upon them the joy of life and good health and prosperity. Blessed be distinguished individuals that have been chosen to make laws and decisions for the citizens of our city with wisdom and understanding in their noble pursuit of justice and equality. Give them guidance so that they will always be conscious of your presence and will strive to enact laws with honesty and integrity in accordance with your will. Grant them the wisdom to turn adversity into opportunity and to transform the hard challenges we face today into the peace from which we'll grasp the growth of tomorrow. May our city serve as the beacon of light for people of all faiths, faiths, and walks of life. May the city of North Las Vegas help achieve the goals which powerfully stated in our pledge of allegiance that America is truly one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May God bless the United States of America, the state of Nevada, and may God bless the city of North Las Vegas, that it's all safe and one nation.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forward to stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rabbi, would you take a second, maybe orientate us about the new temple synagogue and what you're doing, where it's located? And if we have any friends of your faith, maybe we could let them know there's a new place in town to worship.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I run a Chabad center, the first Chabad in North Las Vegas. This is a synagogue which welcomes Jews from any background and even non-Jews. We're here to bring light, we're here to bring warmth to people, bring clarity to people, and, you know, Chabad is strong in Las Vegas itself. There's eight Chabad houses besides for this one, and we're excited to be the first one here in North Las Vegas. You know, we started with the holiday of Hanukkah, we had guests over in our house, and people are searching, people want, and we're happy to be here for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Where's your location?
So it's 620 Copper Lake Street.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you and welcome. Tonight, we have a presentation for the business of the month or the organization of the month is led by our mayor pro temp, Richard Churchill. We'll go downstairs, you're up front, and have a presentation, Richard.
I was gonna use that. Yeah, I can't do that one time. Like, it's like, like family here, family. We're family. Oh, there you go. Well, welcome to our city council meeting over here. I believe it's still Wednesday and it's still 2022. I could tell you, and I came out from our meeting in the back momentarily to say hello to all of these kind people over here that I had an opportunity to meet, that kind of caused us to have this presentation here. We have a policy here of going ahead and recognizing businesses every month. We rotated amongst our four council wards, and I was actually, this is so annoying, this mess, I apologize for it. I had the opportunity to go there and attend, you know, knowing a little bit about it. I don't live far from Caliper, you know, maybe about three blocks over, so I remember when we approved it, and I remember it being built, and it's a great location, and thank you for being there. But I did not know what Caliper Collision does for our veterans. And I could tell you, I was pleased, I was shocked, it was a privilege for me to attend there. U.S. vets were there, we have our veteran over here, which I am more than welcome to have you speak, as well as U.S. vets, you know, and someone from Caliper, because this is very important, you know. Everybody, if they see a veteran, we ask them to go ahead and say, you know, "Thank you for your service." But, you know, in this particular case, you know, Caliper goes well beyond that, you know. They made it a point to give back to all of our veterans, and I've got some notes over here, I want to make sure that I don't miss anything in saying thank you. First, let me mention a couple of names here. The representatives from Caliper Collision, Capita Salas, Brandon Bastador, executive, Robert, I'm gonna destroy this, it's almost like Churchill. Sadegian? Oh, look at that. Regional manager, and this one's an easy, Monica Fox, regional manager. Also, of course, the man of the hour, Steven, Steve Donarisco, you know, our veteran. Caliper Collision repairs cars back to their pre-collision condition, helps our customers by restoring the rhythm of their lives, and I like that sentence there. Caliper invests in their employees and loves giving back to our community and our local people. Why this business was selected? Well, this business was selected because of the reasons I just alluded to. You know, we're asked on an ongoing basis, who's gonna be our business of the month coming up, one or two months ahead of time. When I went into that business, when I went into your business that day, I knew right away that when my turn came up, you were gonna be my business of the month. And, you know, as I said a moment ago, to be able to, you know, have all of your employees over there, and I remember it was just like a family, everybody sat around, all the men that worked on the vehicles, you know, in this particular instance, with our veteran here. But just to know that around the country, your company does this, you know, for all of the other veterans, is something that I think we should be very proud of, we should be very, very appreciative of, and, you know, people need to understand exactly what your business does, that it's really separate and distinct from providing good service to our residents over here. So while I'm drying out over here and I don't have anything to drink, I mean water, not to drink. Oh, you don't know what they did? They refurbished a car for this gentleman over here. And I could tell you that, that was a beautiful car. Do you still have it? Well, that's a good point. That was an amazing looking car. So from the city of North Las Vegas, our certificate of recognition to Caliper, presented January 5th, 2022, to Caliper Collision for providing professional service since 1997, your support to the community, and donating over 500 restored vehicles to veterans and organizations is commendable. Thank you for your contributions, and we wish you continued success, particularly over here in North Las Vegas. You know, we love you, you're part of our community now, I say that to all of the businesses, we say that to everybody. You know, we just don't ask you to come here and then say goodbye. We're here truly to be with you if you need us for anything else, but it's a privilege to have you here as a business in North Las Vegas, so thank you so much. Of course, David, yeah? Love to have anybody from Caliper speak, please. This is your time here, not mine now.
We take pride of our veterans, and we thank them for their services that they provide us, to be living the lifestyle that we have, to protect our freedom, to protect us, and when they come back, they need all the help they can, and we played a little role, small role, in somebody's life. Like we said, we're restoring the rhythm of the life, not only of our employees, our teammates, but also our communities. So that's our number one goal, and that's our number one objective. And we will continue going forward, we will continue going in that directions. This year, we are already planning to give away a few more cars, and we will appreciate all the support that you've given us. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody here. The impact of the car that I was awarded has affected exponentially a lot of veterans and encouraged them. This is something that we weren't used to, you know, a lot of older veterans weren't treated, we were never thanked for our service. So, you know, all this newfound notoriety, so to speak, is sort of mixed with a little bit of skepticism, but when they saw, and I'm talking about the people around me, saw that how tangible this was, and encouraged them, I mean, it's tremendous what you all have done, absolutely tremendous. I'm honored, and, you know, you're to be just congratulated for what you did. Heartfelt.
Hello, everyone, my name's Amy. I am a case manager with U.S. Vets. It is a transitional housing facility for veterans, men and women. I, you know, am here to say thank you to you guys for the simple fact that he's on my caseload, he has worked hard, he has done everything, he's one of my easy ones. I just asked him, what has he done this week? He tells me, I put it in the system. But seriously, the car, when he brought it back, it did bring hope and light to others. We house, what, 120 individuals? Four of them, we only have one room for women, so four women, the rest are men. And I thank you. I thank you for thinking of them, and thank you for using our organization to choose from. Thank you.
We just met.
Well, we'd like to take a joint picture up here, of course, with the appreciation plaque here. And, you know, I know Steve is, you're kind of my age group, look a little younger, but Vietnam resonated very well with a lot of people, unfortunately, for the service and dedication that you provided everybody at that time. I'm sure, I'm used to being hidden in the back. One thing I neglected to mention, based with speaking about our veterans, and we go hand in hand with Caliper, we're the only municipality here in the valley, in Southern Nevada, that has a actual Veterans Community Commission over here. So it's getting underway once again, we have, it'll be initiated probably maybe in another month, so we'll invite Caliper and have you over here, and we'll have five new board members over there, and we'll look forward to working together on what you're doing, okay? Thank you again.
While we have our friends from Caliper, while they're sorting things out, we'd like to ask our chief, Pamela Ahedah, to please step forward. Well, I guess the cat's out of the bag, so to speak, right? I know, I've, I can't even really imagine what it's like being a public servant, kind of like at the tail end of their career. And I know, of course, our colleague, she spent many years in the service of the Clark County School District, and she's very happily now not doing that, but she's still pretty young. But to my last here, we have another person who's still, but still pretty young, and should be retiring here very soon, and that is, of course, our chief of, I think, of the finest police force here in Southern Nevada, the one that's the most responsive. And somehow, it's not a day that I was really seeing that much, because we seem to just keep on going on and on. One thing that you can always count on is we have good leadership in our police department at the very top, our captains who are all in presence, right? We have fantastic leadership. And quite frankly, you have been that guy, you've been the hand there at the steering wheel, or at the rudder, so to speak, you know, guiding our police force into the future. And now, at the same time, it's one of these deals where it's a bittersweet moment, you know, to see you, and I know that you have a lot of things, a lot of things still to do in your career after this one, but it's one of these things where you really didn't come in. So I'd like to go ahead and read this, and then maybe the rest of the mayor and the rest of the council would say something. Presented this January 5th, 2022, the city of Las Vegas would like to present to Pamela Ahedah, Chief of Police, September 26th, 1995, to January 6th, 2002, and of course, those are her years of service to our city, in recognition of your distinguished public service and dedication to the city of Las Vegas, from, of course, the mayor and council of the state of Las Vegas. Chief, this is for you. Oh, actually, let me get rid of this box, we'll get it to you later.
I have a competition box.
She did it for you?
Yeah.
Congratulations. I'm gonna go ahead and pass it here to Scott, and what's worth left?
Congratulations, Chief Pam. We were speaking this morning, and she indicated how I would use the word surreal to see the date on the calendar that your, you know, career concludes, and I was just thinking, as I was standing here, to be in charge of an organization is one thing, but to be in charge of an organization that is operational every day of every week of every month of every year with no days off, no downtime, is pretty daunting, and so I'm just very grateful for you and your service for the last 26 years, and also just the tremendous respect and appreciation I have for all of our North Las Vegas law enforcement family for the work that they do to keep us safe every day of every week of every year.
Just without repeating all my comments this morning, I just want to, again, say congratulations to you. Job well done, job well deserved, I mean, deserved from you, just because of all your years of dedication, your leadership style, we couldn't have asked for a better police chief in you. And if I can remember the quote I said this morning, it was something about, "Now it's your time, you can do whatever you want, you can absolutely do nothing and not have to be worried about being caught doing nothing." Absolutely, something like that. So enjoy this time, it's just, it's a great feeling, but you know, there's always a calling, and if that calling ever comes again, you know, you're always welcome here, and you'll know when it comes.
I'm not gonna go into my speech. First, I made a video, and then I was speaking earlier today, so you know how I feel about you. I mean, your dedication over the years is, you know, sometimes obscured by the fact that you were chief, but all of it put together is an amazing career. And I know you kid about this, and so do I, we're standing in front of a podium and they can't see us.
I have a podium.
Yeah, I know, they moved it out of the way, yeah. So you're an example of what, you know, good things sometimes comes in small packages. So, you know, I mean that as a compliment, so thank you for your service to the city.
And I'll just finish, and we had a great organizational meeting, all the police officers, the FBI, everybody in this whole region came in here to be with her today as she retired, and she got to address all the components of policing throughout the region that had worked with her. And I'll make this statement again, you show me any organization that wins, you show me a Boy Scout troop, a church group, a city, whatever it is, and I'll show you a leader. Pam, you've been a great leader, you've made substantive changes, your imprint and your fingerprints are on this department for years now, and we appreciate you taking that leadership position. Change had to happen, and you ducked your head, ran towards it, and I know you and the city manager worked very, very diligently to bring this department up to the next level. Thank you so much from the residents of North Las Vegas.
I'll keep it short. Again, I just want to say thank you so much to everybody, mayor, council members, Ryan, for having the confidence in me to lead this department, come a long way in 26 years, been here almost 27 years, I wouldn't change a thing, I still think this is the best police department in the valley, and also the city that really cares about its community. I have the best command staff that's gonna take over, and you guys won't even know I'm gone, and also all of the directors in here that I've worked with, I think we have an amazing team of directors that anytime you need anything, you just pick them, phone, and everybody will get you whatever you need, so I appreciate everybody in here. Thank you.
Oh, my God, I'm gonna have to meet my husband.
Thank you, getting back to our council meeting now, moving on to council items, councilman Barone.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a nice big shout out, the NRC, we have, of course, Cass representing, of course, the Neighborhood Recreation Center, his staff put together a fantastic party for the community, of course, you know, many of the people who came, they're from the places a little bit down the street that are a little bit not as fortunate, but the team got together and provided a fantastic birthday party, a breakfast with Santa, of course, the breakfast in the afternoon, and I just wanted to give a shout out to that team, and also to the donors for the gifts for all the families, the 150 people plus who showed up. Kalida Residential LLC, the WS Advisors, R S Strategies and Solutions LLC, who all got together, they chipped in, and it was a little bit of a brighter Christmas for all them. And of course, I'll also give a shout out to my volunteers from Rancho High School Hispanic Student Union, who made it happen. Number two, I'm sure this, you know, this was national news, but I think that perhaps our residents may not know what we had and a fantastic friend, and I'd like to, I'm wearing black, I'd like to, for the city, to definitely remember the late Senator Harry Reid. Mayor, you know, we've been blessed to have lots of friends who are with us, you know, on this march, when we're getting the city back in order. We have fantastic friends that are in high places, but it's kind of funny, because we have actually something on the agenda today, number 34, 135 acres, they'll be a big part of the path forward for the residents of North Las Vegas. And without friends like Dina Titus, without friends like Shelley Brookley, and very much and due in a very large part to, without Senator Harry Reid, we wouldn't have those acres. We wouldn't have those acres, and we wouldn't have lots of other projects that we have, you know, our interceptor that came in, that's brought in billions of dollars of investment. We're talking about, you know, literally thousands of jobs are gonna be created on this one. And I'd like to all to take a moment, when you have a chance, you know, to thank a great friend of the city of North Las Vegas, Senator Harry Reid, and maybe I'm hoping that someday that we remember him and we immortalize the senator, maybe with a humble street, a boulevard, a corner, him, Dr. Stephen Lang, people who really helped us chart a future for our residents, a future of independence and solvency, and for me, deep pride, you know, and I know I will definitely, I was right here in front, and he actually swore me in when he was a Senate Majority Leader, and that just kind of shows you the kind of person he was, he was a Senate Majority Leader, but he took time for things that we know what were, for his friends and people in the community, and that's the kind of person he was. And if his family is listening, right, well, they'll always have friends and family here in the city of Las Vegas. God bless him, Senator, wherever you are, I'm gonna miss you.
Councilman, Mayor Pro Temp Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, I had the privilege of attending an event, two events, actually, with our fire department over here on December 30th. They had a showcase demonstration at Station 52 on Losi with the new, soon to be members of our fire department, the new recruits, and they kind of did it a little bit differently this year. Amazing to see these young men, they were all men in this particular class, just how fit they are, and just the routines that they were going through, which was very, very like what they'd be doing out on the street as an actual firefighter. And I have to give a lot of credit to the chandray, and as well to our chief of fire department, Mr. Joe Calhoun, for putting that together. Then, of course, we came over here afterwards, and they were, they were actually sworn in by our city clerk, and, you know, just watching the proud parents and husbands and wife, you know, put the pins on these new recruits, you know, it was very, very touching and amazing. And I have to tell you once again that, you know, we have the best firefighters, we have the best police officers here in this city. No matter how big this city will grow, and it's growing, it'll always maintain that home feeling where you could literally pick up a phone, again, and say, "I need to speak with somebody." You don't often get that at the other municipalities, but over here you do, so I want to thank you, you know, Fire Chief Calhoun, for putting that together the way you did, and your staff, and congratulations to all of those new recruits.
Thank you. Councilman Black.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. So having access to medical care of all types in our city is very important, and so when a new access point comes online, it's an exciting time. I just wanted to announce tomorrow morning, the ribbon cutting of the ER at Valley Vista, it's on the corner of Elkhorn and Decatur in Ward 3, and it's an extension of Centennial Hills Hospital, part of the Valley Health System. Ironically, I won't be able to attend, because I'll be taking my elderly father, who can no longer drive, to his doctor's appointment, we've been anticipating for several months, so my good friend, Councilman Goins Brown, will be representing the city there at that awesome event to provide medical services to our community, so thank you in advance. So thank you in advance, Pam. Secondly, it's park cleanup time. On January 29th, I'll be having a community neighborhood park cleanup. The park that I have selected is to be determined. I'm going to coordinate with Mr. Cass Palmer to determine the appropriate park that needs a little bit of love from the community and we'll do that on January 9th, or sorry, January 29th. And lastly, yesterday I had a really cool opportunity to learn something new about some of the great services our city provides. I spent the first part of the day with one of our awesome graffiti removal team members, Scott Nichols. We went out and I learned a lot. There's so much more to that effort to remove graffiti in our city than you would think. And it was very, very informative to see how it works and how the data that he gathers is used to prevent, to work with the police department to, you know, prevent future damage due to graffiti. And then later in the day, I spent some time with our code enforcement supervisor, Josh Christensen. Again, had a really great time learning about how the code enforcement outreach and interaction works. Both of those programs illustrate to me the commitment that North Las Vegas has in these areas to beautify and keep our community nice and clean, to enforce the codes that we have on the books and also to try really hard not to let the paint dry or be very dry on the graffiti before it goes away. The thing that I saw between both of these gentlemen, both of these guys have been with the city 22, or I'm sorry, 25 and 22 years respectively, and they both have a passion for the work. They love working for North Las Vegas and they love serving the residents of North Las Vegas and I was super impressed with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Goins Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So how about spring cleaning in the winter? On Saturday, January 15th, from 1:00 to 3:00, my sorority, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, will be hosting a shoe drive. And the purpose of the shoe drive is to help out our homeless male population. One of the things we discovered is that shoes are in high demand, especially in sizes 10 or 11 to 13 and up. However, we will take shoes of any size, new, gently used for women and kids as well, but we want to focus on men's sneakers basically. And once the shoes are collected, they will be donated to Project 150 and New Beginnings Ministry to assist with efforts there. And so I just want to thank Rebecca, John Runix, Bob Mays, Eric Neves, Seraphin and Megan and all of their teams for helping us put this together. And also a story was shared that a homeless man that comes in frequent contact with one of these organizations had a job offer. And the job offer, he needed to wear boots for his job, but the day before he was reported to work, his boots were stolen. And so one of our city employees went home and said, I have a pair of boots, gave them to the gentleman so that he could make it to his job the next day. And so we never know anyone's story or how they got in their situation, but we would certainly appreciate if you have any shoes gently used or new that you would be willing to donate, please bring them out on the 15th at 1:00 to 3:00. And so one of the things, sorry, Mayor, last week Congressman Horstford and I toured Apex Industrial Park, just to discuss the benefits of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act for Water Infrastructure Development and Job Creation. And so this industrial park encompasses 18,000 acres and of land, including 7,000 of those acres that are developable. So with the passage of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, Nevada will receive 403 million over five years to strengthen our water infrastructure and create good paying jobs. This funding will put North Las Vegas, Clark County, and our whole region on a new trajectory for economic growth and diversification. So Southern Nevada overall needs more development ready land with infrastructure and the Apex area in North Las Vegas is a top option for creating that opportunity. We need this funding so we can fast track construction efforts, ensuring that we don't lose out on any of these opportunities for development. So again, if fully funded, proposed water projects at Apex will create thousands of construction jobs, thousands of permanent jobs, and will only strengthen and diversify our regional economy. And I'd just like to thank you, Jared, for your work on this. I know you've been working diligently on this and just to remind you that we picked the coldest, windiest day to go out there, but it turned out to be a great tour.
Thank you. You guys are really working hard in your ward areas. Appreciate that and I know the residents do too. I'm now going to, as I mentioned, adjourn this meeting of the city council to the meeting of the redevelopment agency. Chairwoman Goins Brown will take over from here. So our meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to the redevelopment agency first public forum. Now is the time to speak on any posted redevelopment agency agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any written comments or callers?
No, we do not.
Thank you. With that being said, I will close the public forum. So moving on to the redevelopment agency agenda.
Item one, approve redevelopment agency regular meeting agenda of January 5th, 2022. Chairwoman Goins Brown and agency members, it's our recommendation to approve the redevelopment agency agendas published.
Thank you. I'll call for a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Item two, approve redevelopment agency regular meeting minutes of December 1, 2021. Chairwoman Goins Brown and agency members, the redevelopment agency agenda, consent agenda consists of one item and it's our recommendation to approve as published.
Any questions or comments? If not, I'll call for a motion.
Move for approval.
Chairwoman Goins Brown.
And that motion passes.
Before we proceed to the second public forum, I want to note that you submitted a written request to me yesterday calling for a special redevelopment agency meeting on January 19th at 4:30 PM.
Yes, Madam City Clerk, that is correct. I called a special redevelopment agency meeting in council chambers on January 19th, 2022 at 4:30 PM. The subjects to be considered at the special meeting on January 19th will be a public hearing to receive public comment on the redevelopment agency's intent to sell 59 parcels in the downtown redevelopment district to KLQZOZB2 LLC for 15.3 million and approval of a purchase and sale agreement related to the sale of the parcels in the downtown redevelopment district.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for that announcement.
You're welcome. So moving on to the second public forum. Madam City Clerk, do we have any written calls or any written comments or callers?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Thank you. I will close the public forum. I am now going to adjourn this meeting of the redevelopment agency, back to the city council meeting and to Mayor Lee.
Thank you very much. I know being the chair of the redevelopment agency sometimes has agendas that are slight like that, but I will tell you, in the next quarter of this year, you guys are going to be so busy. There's so much going on in the city with their redevelopment team. Hang on, guys, it's going to be exciting. Moving on to the first public forum, this time is set aside for comment on posted agenda items excluding public hearings, which will be heard separately. So if you want to speak on an item listed under the consent agenda or the business, now is that time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards for posted agenda items or callers on the phone? We do not have.
No, sir, we do not.
So then I see no one coming from the audience. We will close the public forum and move on to the agenda.
Item three, approve city council regular meeting agenda of January 5th, 2022. Mayor and councils, our recommendation to approve the agenda is published.
Thank you. Counselor, if there's any comments or questions, and now would be the time. If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move for approval.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and council, the consent agenda consists of items numbers four through 28. It's our recommendation to approve the consent agenda as published.
Thank you very much. Unless there's any comments or questions on the consent agenda, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve consent.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Madam City Clerk, on the set future of public hearing dates, I direct you to set any hearing dates as necessary.
Mr. Mayor, so noted.
Thank you very much. Moving on to public hearings.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item number 30, approved vacation 17-2021, Sienna Craig and North Fifth for applicant Sienna 28 Holdings LP to vacate a portion of public drainage easement and public right of way, both along the southeast corner of Craig Road and North Fifth Street. Ward Two, Goins Brown for possible action.
Great, thank you very much. Is there a presentation for this before I go to public hearing? I don't see one. I will now go to public hearing. Are you John?
Yes.
Could you, Gusterson?
Yes, John Gusterson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gusterson. Thank you for being here this evening. It's your time to speak.
This vacation is just to clean up the right of way along Craig Road. When they realigned back in the early 90s, they realigned Craig Road. This was the only parcel that they didn't realign the right of way. So we're cleaning that up because we're in the process of doing development on that corner now. The city, the city was the ones who requested us to do this vacation.
It's probably going to pass then. So we sure appreciate that. Is there anybody else that'd like to come forth for the public and discuss this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Goins Brown, Councilwoman Goins Brown.
I don't have any comments on this one, Mayor. Is there any other comments that's going to be made? If not, I'll make a motion to approve.
No other comments. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number 31, approved vacation 18-2021, Losi and Deer Springs, Phase Four for applicant Touchstone Deer Springs LLC to vacate two portions of the existing public drainage easement along Stat Street and Green Envy Avenue, Ward Four. Churchill for possible action.
Thank you very much. Is there any presentation? I don't think there is.
No presentation.
We will open up the public hearing on this item. Madam City Clerk, are there any blue cards, written comments, or callers on the phone?
No, sir, there are not.
We have not? We will, anybody in the audience who would like to come forth? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And at this time, I'll turn the mic over to Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be happy to make a motion to approve VAC-18-2021.
We have a motion. Are there comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Mayor and council, one of the, we're talking just for a second right now because just to let you all aware that Reno has made an announcement today that they'll be going to virtual meetings. So we were just trying to kind of clarify if we need to make any clarification to the redevelopment motion that was made or the announcement that was made about it being here in council chambers.
Wait, wait, I'm missing all this. What are you saying?
We're not. So during the redevelopment meeting earlier, we talked about the fact that the meeting for the special meeting on the 19th would be here in council chambers. But because of what's going on right now in the community, Reno has, for example, gone to virtual meetings, they've closed their, they've closed their buildings. So we just, in abundance of caution, just wanted to make sure we put that on the record that it will either be here in chambers or we'll have a virtual component to it. We will have the meeting, but I just wanted to clarify that in chambers.
It will be in chambers.
We anticipate it'll be in chambers. However, if anything changes.
It could change or just guaranteed to be in the chambers?
It'll be here. The question will be if it'll be open to the public or if they'll be, have to come virtually.
I'm so sorry, Ryan. I appreciate that. Okay, we're back to item number 32.
Item number 32, conduct public hearing on proposed wastewater rate reduction.
Mr. Brady.
Hello.
Our utilities director, welcome. And we're excited to talk about this issue you brought forth.
Definitely. At council's direction, staff conducted a detailed analysis of the city's residential wastewater rates. This included a comparison to similar rates within other local jurisdictions and options to reduce those rates to provide relief to North Las Vegas residents where possible. When the analysis was completed earlier in 2021, it revealed a significant disparity with other agencies with our residential customers that are at our higher billing rates and billing tiers. There were two general models, just for your information, on how cities or public agencies and public utilities assess sewer rates. One is a flat rate and the other is a rate based on average water usage. Now, this is primarily because there is not an economical way to measure wastewater usage and discharge from residential units. In fact, the city only has a few industrial users that have undertaken the cost to install the specialized sewer meters necessary to do that. And in those cases, it's typically because they use millions of gallons of water every month that don't go into the wastewater stream. All other local jurisdictions use a flat rate for residential service, whereas North Las Vegas, just like Phoenix, Los Angeles, Salt Lake City, Denver, Dallas, and many others use a rate based on water usage. The analysis revealed that some 31% of our residential customers have a sewer rate that is comparable to other jurisdictions here in the valley due to their lower water consumption. However, close to 70% of our residential customers have a greater disparity, half of those as much as two times the other local jurisdictions. To develop an approach to address this disparity, staff started looking at the funding needs for the next 10 years, including annual debt service, payment in lieu of taxes, needed capital expenditures, and anticipated operational costs, and implementing a utility reserve policy that basically looked at maintaining a fund balance for 12 months of operational expenses. And so several alternatives were developed as a result of that analysis. And what we did was looking at alternatives that would, one, achieve equity and some relief for our customers as well as maintaining the stability of the utility enterprise fund. In concert with expenditure reductions, greater operational efficiencies, and improved billing information that resulted from our ongoing AMI conversion process, we were able to develop several of those options. And these options were presented to the utility advisory board for evaluation at a special meeting held on November 16th, 2021, at which a recommendation that council modify and reduce the current rates and transition to a two-tier flat rate based on consumption. It was approved and we are bringing that forward for you now. This recommended alternative would result in a new rate for customers that would, that use up to 5,000 gallons of water per month to $21.50 per month or $258 a year, and those that use 5,001 gallons or more per month to $37.50 per month or $450 per year. This approach would result in a reduction for all customers. However, it would be small for those who are in comparison to the other rates with the other jurisdictions, but it would lead up to a 37% reduction for many of those that are at a greater disparity. So in accordance with the city charter, a 30-day comment period is required and notice of a public hearing must be published in the review journal, which occurred on November 30th, December 6th, and December 8th. And it has been filed with the city clerk as well as posted on the city's website. This item is to conduct a public hearing regarding that reduction and we have item 35, which presents a resolution for council's approval that will implement it and put it into effect February 1st. Available for any questions?
Tom, just hang out for a second here. This is exciting. You know, counsel, you've done a great job, this, the whole council, the staff of fixing and repairing and rebuilding this city without raising fees or rates, call them taxes, whatever you want on our residents. We have worked diligently to use that money that's been given to us through the social contract and return the value. But now, talking to the city manager one day and we were wondering, you know, Tom, about inflation was going up, you know, and we were thinking, how are we doing everywhere? And so the city manager and I got together and figured out where are we not in parity? It came up, Ryan brought up, that he hears a lot of times that our sewer rates are higher than everybody else's. So we asked Tom to do a constructive view of how could we do something without damaging the future revenues to keep that business moving? And the city manager asked Tom to come up with a plan, go to the utilities advisory board, see if he could do something. So what we're doing here today, counsel, is during these high inflationary periods, we have found a way to offer relief. Tom Brady has found a way to offer relief to our residents. It might not be as much as people need, but we are equal to everyone else's valley and we were saving as much as we we were saving as much as we can of the taxpayer dollar into their pocketbook rather than the city bank accounts. So I just want to thank the city manager for one, for authorizing a look at this, working with you, Chairman of our Utility Department, Tom Brady, for recognizing that we work for the people in North Las Vegas. And I don't know if you guys want to say anything, but I just want you to know that Mr. Brady is an exceptional director. Isaac?
Well, it's like you said, Mayor, it's, it's recognition that, of course, we've been going through some tough times. They're not over with the, with inflation being rampant, you know? Every time you go to a delivery gas tank, you know, you're gonna feel it more than wallet. This is, it's, it's a small measure, but it's a measure that we can positively take to help out people a little bit. And actually, one of my neighbors had pointed something out here just a couple of years ago. I think, I think we had a conversation about that. And I think when I finally get to go and look him in the eye and say, hey, well, we, we addressed it, and it looks like you were right. It'll be, it's good to be able to actually address people, look them in the eye, and tell them that they're right, and we could take action on it. So thank you very much.
Councilman Churchill?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to Tom. Work well done. I know, and it wouldn't just be specific to Ward four, but, you know, I do cover Sun City. We have seniors out there, and, and they don't use near the amount of water that a larger family would use. So, you know, I've been asked that question many, many times, so I'm, I'm happy to, to say that thanks to your efforts, and the utility board, and city manager, we can grant them some relief now. So appreciate all that you do.
Councilman Black?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brady, to you and your team for this analysis and subsequent, you know, proposal for the reduction. It's actually very timely with a conversation I had today with a resident, seventy-five-year-old gentleman, his wife on a fixed income. He wanted to speak to me more in my role as a member of the Southern Nevada Water Authority relative to water use and development, but it kind of went into this topic here. And I said, stay tuned to our meeting tonight for some potential, you know, good news relative to sewer rates and utility costs in general. So he's, I think, excited to be following this along as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goin's Brown?
I'd just like to add my thanks, and just to remind people, whatever rates are, and this is a great thing, but always be water smart and conserve as much as we can.
Definitely. Thank you, Tom. Now, Tom, we're gonna open the public hearing. I doubt anybody's gonna want to debate this. It's a brilliant idea, but I have to have an open public hearing. Madam City Clerk, are there any blue cards, written comments, or callers on the telephone?
No, Mr. Mayor.
There are not. We will close the public hearing, and the chair will take a motion. Unless there's any more comments or questions.
I'll have to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved, five-zero. Congratulations. Thank you, Thomas. Moving on to business.
Item number thirty-three, pass and adopt Resolution twenty-six seventy-three permitting sale of certain real property to Kern River Gas, Kern River Transmission Gas Company pursuant to NRS two-sixty-eight dot zero-zero-eight-three, Ward four, Churchill for possible action.
Thank you. I don't think there, Director Daphran, there's any presentation on this one either?
Yes, no, no presentation.
No presentation, okay. I'm gonna open up the public hearing on this. Madam City Clerk, once again, is there anybody commenting on the blue cards, written comments, or callers on the phone?
No, Mr. Mayor.
No, and I see no one coming forth. We'll close the public hearing. The chair will, unless there's any comments or questions on this, the chair will take a motion.
Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to pass and adopt Resolution twenty-six seventy-three.
We have a motion. Councilman Churchill, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number thirty-four, pass and adopt Resolution number two-six-eight-zero, accepting the offer to purchase approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-five-point-three-six net acres, more or less of real property identified as the J C Z South, generally located at this southwest corner of C C two-fifteen Beltway and Pecos Road in North Las Vegas, Nevada, identified as Assessor's Parcels number one-two-four dash two-four dash six-zero-one dash zero-zero-one, one-two-four dash two-four dash seven-zero-one dash zero-zero-five, and one-two-four dash two-four dash seven-zero-one dash zero-zero-six pursuant to procedures established in NRS two-six-eight dot zero-six-three and two-six-eight dot zero-six-two, and authorize staff to enter into negotiations on the purchase and sale agreement and development agreement.
Thank you very much. We're gonna open up with a presentation from our Economic Redevelopment Director, Jared Luke.
Just prior to his presentation, Mayor, I just wanted to say a couple of comments. First of all, this is, this is something that has been in the works for quite a while. In fact, it was, as, as some people may or may not know, this was something that was identified as a, as an important piece of property a year before you even, you even took office. And two people that are no longer with us contributed to this. First was Professor Robert Lang, who worked on the idea and concept of the importance and significance of this parcel, and, or more specifically, in leveraging the VA hospital and using it for economic output in the city of North Las Vegas. And then, from that idea, of course, your relationship with Senator Reed, and our efforts working with his staff in taking land that had already been designated in a federal bill that was well along its way in July of 2013, and moving some, this acreage, this hundred-and-thirty-five acres, off of some of that land, down to, beside the VA hospital, to kind of marry that idea of leveraging that hospital for economic development, and taking some of the, the land, as you used to say, on the alluvial plain, that really wasn't gonna produce for a long time, and we now see it's still not gonna be able to produce for a while because it's going through the FUDS process and other things like that. And that's where, kind of, one of the reasons we've gotten to where we are today. So this is a very significant piece of, of what we've been working on here in the city of North Las Vegas. And now we're finally moving to, to be able to realize the dream of leveraging that hospital and also using this piece that Senator Reed's staff worked with us on.
Well spoken. Director Luke?
Is that better? There we go.
There you go.
I'll state again for the record, Jared Luke, Director of Economic Development and Government Affairs. I could probably just say ditto to everything that City Manager Ryan Juden just said. But before I get into my comments, I want to thank my team, Economic Development Team, Terry Sheridan, Bill DeGere, and Alan Ragsdale. And I'd like to thank the city attorney, Michaela, for letting me adopt. One of her attorneys on her staff, Dan Ivey, he's basically been with us this entire process, and he's been a massive, massive help. So thanks to, to those folks. And I want to say thank you to the council as well for your priorities and vision in how to develop this town, and what we need to do to provide essential services to our residents. This project, we've dubbed it the Medical Campus. The intent was to build a hospital, to attract a hospital group, and to provide ancillary services not only to the residents of North Las Vegas, but also to those members of the Veterans Affairs that are dealing with their, their own personal issues, and their families are dealing with issues, and as a result of their service to us as residents of the United States of America, to this city. As we know, that the VA hospital's been out there as a diamond in the rough for many, many years, and we were finally able to leverage that asset and create something that the residents of this town can be proud of. I want to clarify a little bit the process, where we're at right now. This meeting is to approve the sale agreement, the offer that we've received. City Clerk received three offers that qualified per the resolution that we have in place. And these three qualified offers, staff dug into them. We dug deep. We looked hard. We asked a lot of questions. And based on the makeup of what the city needs, the direction that we've received from the city manager, and the Assistant City Manager, Dylan Goldberg, on what to build, what needs to be there, resident, or we can't build residential, so this is all commercial. We have hospital, medical services, retail, office complexes. This is gonna be about a ten-year project. After meeting with staff, recommendation from staff is to move forward with the specific developer, and that developer is the Pacific Group. We're here for any questions that council may have, but we're excited to move forward finally on this project. It's been a long time coming, and we want to make sure that we put this out on the right trajectory. The next step is, we have to work with the developer. We have to agree to a development agreement and a purchase-sale agreement. Those two pieces are contingent to us moving forward with really any developer that, that the council would, would like to award this project to.
So you named the name of the company. What was it again?
Pacific Group.
Pacific Group was the winner. In, in the process of this, you feel competent, you're bringing us something that you, I know you'll come back later with the presentation, all that kind of stuff, but you feel, you've met with these people, you feel very competent in this organization. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Jared Luke, again, for the record. We've had extensive conversations, and we've looked deep into the economics of the project that was proposed, and obviously through the DA process with the involvement from staff and, and those folks, stakeholders on the project. We will make sure that there's a product that are deliverable that's both economical for the developer, but also hits all of the points necessary for the city before we make this a finalized award on this project.
Okay, thank you very much. One person that should be recognized quite a bit more than all of us in this building is Lorena Candrellaria, working like she did with the BLM, and for years, as, as shepherding this, this, her team and her staff and her. So I just want to make sure we didn't forget, those ten thousand, over ten thousand people a month go to the VA hospital now. This, there's something needed out there, you know? And I think you've, you've definitely come up, apparently by what you've shown us, a world-class organization, and they're gonna bring a world-class product to us. And you think, when will that be, to come back with the presentation of what to expect?
We'd like to enter into the DA conversation. We'd like to see if we can get something done within the next sixty days. Now, with the BLM, we have six months to close on the land. So when we get to a point where there's an agreement on a DA, a development agreement, when we feel that we're in a process in escrow where, you know, there's no turning back, things are moving forward, and it looks like we're gonna close with no problems, then at that point, we'd like to return with the developer and, and have a presentation to council on what is actually going to be built. Right now, we're in concept phases, but let's look at what is actually going to be built on the hundred-and-thirty-five acres.
Thank you very much, council. This is a, let me open the public hearing real quick. Would that be all right? Is there anybody from the public that would like to come up? Please come up. Did you fill out a blue card, sir? We can fill a blue card out later, but please come up, sir.
If you'd please state your name for the record. Tiger Bill Holden with Tiger Team Biz. I'd like to personally thank Bill DeGere. And I spoke, spoke once to Jared Luke regarding this project. And Mayor Lee, it's been a long time. I've known you for many years. This project, Bill DeGere had approached me on it and said, Bill, we need something creative for this site. We need somebody that can put it, put together a team. We did that. And unfortunately, we had, we had approached three financiers regarding this project to be able to purchase the land and be able to go forward with a major development on that site. We brought on board Pacific Medical Builders, who's the number-one design-build developer for medical complexes. They had agreed to bring all the money to build the medical side up after an eighteen-month study for the community, what the community needs were. I would be happy, as far as, we've put the whole project together. We had a major architect, in fact, one of the number-one architect firms in this town, George Bergman, Bergman and Associates. We had OS contractors as far as to be the construction team on it. I can tell you this, I totally support this project. And being a veteran, a Vietnam vet, the VA has spent over one million dollars in taking care of this body of all the things that have happened to me since I was in Vietnam, Southeast Asia, and other parts of the world. All I can say is that right now, please support this project every way you can, any way I can be of service. I would put my name out there right now. I would absolutely be delighted to be involved in helping develop that project. The VA needs right now, just for your information, over thirty-five-hundred veterans are in community care using outside community hospitals and other services that are not here in North Las Vegas. Okay? Just that alone could bring you medical services that are needed, and you'd have clients from right across the street. So I thank the council and, and the development team, Bill, Jared, the whole bunch, y'all did a marvelous job, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Very, very kind of you to come up and say that. Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council on this? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. There was a comment from City Council. Councilman?
Yeah, Mayor, and I appreciate, of course, the, the residents' words. You know, Mayor, we've been very fortunate that in the past couple of months, we've have an outside operator, Conal Health, that's actually built several small offices, both in Ward one and Ward two, and actually, I think, one in Ward four. And every time I get a chance to speak, you know, I'm, I'm so grateful, because even though they're relatively small, they're kind of a modest investment, it's a good investment, they literally present a percentage shift in the amount of healthcare that we have available for our residents. I, I really look forward to, to this project. I know I'm in, in full support, as someone who had lived here all my life, and I'm looking forward here to the available services for, for my own family, for the residents, my friends, my neighbors, my students, right? This is a big deal. And I, I totally support everything that the city manager said. And I want to definitely thank the Economic Development Team, who I know, they were, they put a lot of sweat and, and a lot of muscle into this one. I, I, I think this is, again, it's a transformative project, something that takes us, takes the entire city into the right direction. Again, I, like I, like I said before, I think we should be very, very grateful to all the work that our, our friend Shelley Broklin did in helping to secure the original of the VA hospital. And this will be a fantastic piece, and I'm hoping that there'll be a, a reasonable part of this that's also dedicated to, to mental health. If there's any part of the entire overall healthcare scheme that it has been totally underserved for the whole valley, it's in mental health. And so I'm, I'm hoping that eventually the, the private development agreement will include a, a piece to, that will help us, you know, I mean, at these times that we see just how desperate that we are for, for, for mental health, I'm, I'm hoping that'll be a part of it. I thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Black?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. You know, really, this is a tremendous opportunity for our community. Jared mentioned that it'll take approximately a decade to build out, but I'm thinking beyond that first decade, and then many, many decades of valuable service that this project will provide for our community. Two things that, that, and Jared doesn't necessarily have to come up and answer, but things that I would like to put out on the record right now. One is, as, as, I know we're very preliminary in the process, but as things start to gain traction, as far as the construction of the site, obviously there will be a, a general contractor relationship, but I would ask that we do everything we can to include local contractors, local businesses, local proprietors of, of, you know, contracting services to utilize in that, in that project, just so we can support our local businesses and our local economy. That's one thing. And then also, as the development agreement conversations take, take shape, I would ask that, or hope any way that the council would be able to receive regular briefings on that, just to make sure that the components of the development agreement are in alignment with what the ultimate vision and outcome of the project should become. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Lee.
Councilman Goin's Brown?
Thank you, Mayor, and ditto with everyone that spoke before me. And just kudos to our- kudos to our amazing economic development team under the leadership of Jared. But I want to just give a special thank you to Bill DeGere for the work that he's done over the years. When you take on a project of this magnitude, um, it, it truly is a team effort, um, and I appreciate everything that you have done and, you know, sometimes dealing with four or five different personalities up here to create a vision, it's, it's not an easy task. Um, and so, we're, we're just thankful and grateful for the entire economic team and Bill. And then, just to piggyback on what Councilman Black said with the local talent, um, and as much as we can, you know, with training components to that, you know, the residents that are working at, at our, in our job creation zone are truly North Las Vegas residents and to me, that just extends the pride that we have in North Las Vegas and our city. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Churchill, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I also want to thank our, uh, our economic team, uh, and, uh, Jared was, uh, exceptional in, uh, in briefing me on, uh, all of these different players in this, uh, development here. Um, and this is one of those extremely important projects that, that actually transcends, uh, you know, wards, happens to be in Ward 4, but, you know, this is so big and, and so important to the city, you know, uh, I'm just looking forward to being a, a part of, uh, bringing this thing, uh, forwards for our residents over here. And very clearly, I'm a big supporter, um, of what, uh, Councilman Black had mentioned, uh, utilize our, our local people as much as possible. You know, these are people that, uh, have contributed to making the city what it is today, uh, and, um, as far as the family goes, yes, they're part of the family over here. And, uh, excuse me, I, I know many of them and, uh, this is, uh, our opportunity to, to give back while they could, you know, give their performance and, uh, talent to the residents going forward. Right now, we're sitting on, on council over here, but in the years to come, there'll be other people over here and it's such a privilege to be part of the council right now that'll be setting this thing in motion for the future. So, thank you so much, Mayor.
Uh, Director Luke, I think you think you're done, but we haven't even voted. Would you come back up? Um, do we have, who is the local contact that if the council ever wanted to talk to somebody or, you know, that, is there somebody we know?
Uh, yes, Mayor, Jared Luke again for the record. Uh, the local, I guess, point person would be Tony Sansone, the CFO of Pacific Group, but I believe we have here the CEO, Doug Anderson of the Pacific Group.
Is he here right now?
I'm sure both of them would be willing to answer questions.
John, would you come up for a second and introduce yourself? And you might want to wait till we vote.
Thank, thank you for the confidence, uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Jared. We've worked very closely with Bill DeGere. Um, you know, I was writing down some words that I thought were really indicative of this project, which is extremely important. Um, the vision and the alignment on the long-term legacy that you guys have, uh, come up with is, is critically important for the city and the people in the city and this valley. As a resident of Nevada in this valley, uh, and many of my family members were excited to see this, our team is really excited. So, um, I didn't, I wasn't prepared to say much, but, uh, your vision and leadership is, um, will be here for decades. After everyone in this room is gone, that project will be there serving the needs of this valley and this city and it's just, it's just a tremendous thing that you guys have undertaken with a lot of effort from staff and, and your leadership, it's just, it's immense and we congratulate you guys.
Well, thank you for being here. Do you have any, Mr. City Manager?
No, Mayor, I think that, that this has been a good conversation. I think that, uh, now it's where the rubber meets the road, where we sit down and make sure that we put together a development agreement that encapsulates the vision, um, and make sure that this does become the legacy pieces with, as was just described and as you, you all have, uh, mentioned and we know that that's the desire of Mayor and Council. So, we're going to work hard to make sure that we, we put that together and that we, um, kind of boil down everything that we've been talking about for really almost eight years-
Yeah.
-on this and it's going to be, uh, an exciting project. It is truly going to be something that's going to transform, um, that entire, uh, area out there and quite frankly, transform the town and the region.
Well, thank you for keeping a heavy thumb on it, keeping it moving forward. You have been working very hard for eight years on that with your staff. So, Councilman Churchill, and the chairs, is there any other discussion here? And we've closed the public comment, we'll leave it up to you to make your decision.
Well, Mayor, um, I would have to say, as I mentioned a moment ago, this thing is so big and tremendous and important to the city, it transcends wars, but, you know, I guess I have the privilege and, uh, the ability to say, uh, I'll make a motion to pass and adopt Resolution 2680.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Good job, Director Luke.
Yeah, I'll do that, yeah.
Good idea.
Item number 35, pass and adopt Resolution Number 2681, residential wastewater rate reduction.
Thank you. We had a great presentation by the director. Is there any other comments or questions or thoughts to him at this time? Seeing none, I'll open up a public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to come speak to the council? Are there any written blue cards or callers or comments on the phone?
No, sir, there's not.
We have none. We'll close the public hearing, the chair will take a motion. If there's no other comments.
Move for approval.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Thank you very much.
Item number 36, pass and adopt Resolution Number 2682, approving the cooperative agreement with the chief elected official consortium of the establishment of workforce connections as a joint powers authority of the Southern Nevada Workforce Development Area in accordance with Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act of 2014, NRS 277 dot zero four five, NRS 277 dot zero one zero zero, NRS dot, or whatever?
What?
Yeah, whatever that was. Yeah, NRS 277 dot 100. I think I said too many zeros. Um, NRS 277 dot 120 and NRS 277 dot 140 for possible action.
Thank you. Um, is there a presentation on this? And I think Councilman Black would like to somewhat discuss this with us.
I can just speak briefly to the, the origin of this item. Uh, workforce connections, I represent the City Council as a member of the local elected officials consortium, I'm the current, uh, consortium chair and this has been, uh, something in, in the works for many, many months. At first, I want to say thank you, uh, to Michaela for loaning us Andy Moore, he was the, the rotation every year, uh, the different municipality or organization brings in their legal counsel. Andy was really the person that championed this over the last, uh, 12 plus or minus months and so, thank you to Andy, if you're listening. Basically, workforce connections has been, uh, part of the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act of 2014 and then we have prior to that, uh, been the local workforce development board for many decades, um, with a, a legal identity with the state. That, uh, legal identity with the state was, um, brought into question of, to a degree and so, in order to formalize it, moving forward, so there's no question of what workforce connections does, who it is and what it is as a quasi-government entity, this joint resolutions, uh, joint resolution, um, document was put into effect. This is also being voted upon by all the local elected officials consortium members throughout, uh, Clark County, Esmeralda County, uh, Knight County and Clark County. So, it's a, really a procedural, uh, cleanup item that Andy worked really hard on to bring us to this point today.
Thank you. Um, that would be the presentation. I'm going to open up the public comment right now. Is there anybody here that would like to come forward to speak to the council? Are there any blue cards, written comments or callers on the phone, Madam City Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
There are not. I see no one coming forth. We'll close the public hearing. Uh, Councilman Black, would you be interested in making a motion?
Certainly, I'll make a motion to pass and adopt Resolution Number 2682.
We have a motion, please cast your vote.
I don't think it allowed me to vote.
Well, Scott, it was a good presentation, but you didn't get it.
Yeah, wah, wah, right?
You didn't get it.
Yes. I can withdraw my vote. Now, I'm going to say yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Items approved.
Item number 37, pass and adopt Resolution Number 2683, authorizing the city manager as designated to give notice to the sale of property subject to the assessment lien that is delinquent and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you very much. Um, that, that title is the presentation there, so we'll suspense for that and move on. Is there anybody, I'm going to open the public comment now. Anybody here that'd like to discuss this with the City Council? Blue cards, written comments or callers on the phone?
No cards or callers, sir.
We will close the public hearing, the chair, unless there's any comments or questions in this, the chair will take a motion.
Mayor, uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, pass and adopt Resolution 2683.
Thank you, we have a motion, but Councilman Churchill, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number 38, pass and adopt Resolution Number 2684, to create the North Las Vegas Education Advisory Committee and establish the bylaws therefore.
We were, um, Council, uh, Mr. City Manager, by, by somewhat of the legislature, we were given an opportunity to come forth and build up a, a group of citizens. Could you explain that process? It's, it's really cut and dry, but it's very important to what we're trying to do in North Las Vegas with education.
Uh, yes, Mayor, one of the things that, that, uh, the legislature has authorized local governments to do is to create, um, advisory, uh, boards to, uh, and this, this is, this enables us to create, uh, an advisory committee, um, for, for the city of North Las Vegas. I think one of the things that we've definitely, uh, noticed in, in, over the last couple of years is that, uh, in fact, I've had several calls just in the last two days regarding CCSD. So, we get a lot of people that contact us about CCSD, we, I know everyone's constantly fielding concerns about CCSD and so, this is just one of the, uh, things that it's provided in the NRS that allows us as, as a local government to, um, kind of be a little bit more involved and engaged in what's happening, um, with CCSD. This is something that, uh, we have not done, some of our sister institutions in the valley have put one together. Um, I think that the, the mission of this is slightly different than what you see other places. Um, it falls inconsistent with, it falls to be consistent with what we've been trying to do as far as lift where we can. Um, and in some places, we've, we've lifted in areas that are unconventional and, uh, not usual. I think a lot of the work that, um, Councilman Goins Brown has done with, with SNUMA and other education initiatives are things that could have been, uh, I don't want to say better informed, because I think they were great efforts that were done, but this is just another tool in the toolbox that's provided in the NRS, um, that we believe it's appropriate, that it is appropriate at this time, um, considering all the challenges and all the concerns and comments that we get. It provides another forum for our residents to come to, to be able to express their concerns and, and that's the reason we have it before this body today.
Thank you very much. Um, that was the presentation. I'm going to open it up for public comment and ask the city clerk once at a time if there's any blue cards, written comments or callers on the phone.
No, sir, there are not.
No, ma'am, there's not. Council, any comments or questions or thoughts on this?
Um, Mayor, yeah, um, I, I get, you know, kind of, we're bookended here, you know, I, I like to refer to, to my colleague, uh, she was in, uh, in education for 34 years and, um, of course, I'm still a, a teacher, 35 years, I, I've just been corrected and, uh, I, I have my 27 and, and, uh, one thing that, that I've noticed when I've, uh, when I've had a chance to go out and go to the parts of the valley, uh, what's good for us here, what, what makes sense for us here in North Las Vegas, uh, is usually radically different than, say, what's, what's up with a school, say, in Summerland or at Mountain's Edge, you know? Even here within our, our, with, with our city, um, the needs for the neighborhood vary, uh, even within our city, just from neighborhood to neighborhood. Um, and, uh, I, I think, uh, this is a fantastic step forward to, uh, give our, our citizenry, uh, give our residents a chance to get a, a bigger, uh, voice in the direction of how the education in our, in our municipality, uh, should, or should it look like, what direction it should be taken. Um, sometimes, of course, it seems like, uh, things that, that happen, you know, as a teacher, you know, some, some things seem like they're, um, adopted, uh, it seems so far away. I know that the edge sheds right down the street, but sometimes, you know, they, they seem so far away. So, if we have a, a group of our own residents who can chime in and talk to the, to their fellow residents, their, their neighborhood people, um, and, uh, bring these things here to, uh, to our, our board here, it gives us a chance, you know, to also, you know, work with our partners at, at, at CCSD. So, I, I, I know, I welcome this as a, as a good, a very fantastic, uh, step forward and we, and again, I, I, I think the model for us is our friends over in Henderson, that they have taken such a proactive, uh, approach and how, uh, the City Council, uh, in Henderson, uh, want to see and how they want to shape education for the children in their neighborhood. On this one, I, I think they, they've shown us a, a pretty good lead and I think we should follow them on this one. Sorry about that.
Ms. Goins Brown?
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to add, um, just being in the confines of your school building, um, every single day, you're, you're bound by those guidelines and principles in that particular building and so, that's what you focus on, um, as an administrator. Um, then you don't necessarily see the other side of the equation as much because you're focused on what's going on in your particular building, because you want to make sure that your school is thriving, is thriving as well. So, I think this committee is going to be an excellent idea for this, the residents in North Las Vegas, because it's going to offer them a safe space, it's going to offer them a voice to express their concerns, whether, you know, good things are going on or whether not so good things are going on in, in their child's school. And I think it's also going to be important that we expand the opportunity to our students that are in those schools on a day-to-day and in day-out basis, because we want to hear from them, because that's our future and we want to make sure that we're meeting their needs now, because, you know, we don't want them to come back 10, 15 years later and say, this is, we did not get this as part of Clark County School District, so we want to make sure that all voices are heard.
I see no other comments or questions, um, then the chair will take a motion. Ms. Goins Brown?
I'd like to make a motion to pass and adopt Resolution 2684.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to ordinances introduction only.
Yes, Mayor and Council, item number, excuse me, 39, introduce ordinance number 33102, extending the corporate limits of the city of North Las Vegas, Nevada, to include within annex to and make part of said certain city specifically described territory adjoining and contiguous to the corporate limits of said city, declaring said territory and inhabitants thereof to be annexed to said city and subject to all debt, all debts, laws, ordinances and regulations in force in said city, offering a map or plat of said described territory to be recorded in the office of the county recorder of the county of Clark, state of Nevada and providing other matters related thereto. Ord one, setting forth action for January 9th, 20, January 19th, 2022.
I'm just glad Dale didn't fall asleep, but I'll do item number 40. Introduce ordinance number 3105, meaning chapter 8 of Title 13 of the North Las Vegas Municipal Code to increase administrative fees, fines and water, and, and water waste violations and modify the reconsideration of appeals process there, therefore, and other mod, and other matters property related thereto, except for final action, January 19th, 2022.
Thank you. So, those will be on our next agenda, correct? Both of them will be on there, great. Um, moving on to city manager's report.
Just real quick, Mayor, um, you know, what's always kind of interesting to me is that, as a student of the process, that comes at this from a different angle, is how when you have a meeting like we had today where huge things have happened, um, and I think a lot of them will, you know, they're probably not getting the, the kind of accolades and rec, and recognition that they should from the very unusual step of, of local government reducing fees, um, on residents, that never happens, uh, definitely, definitely doesn't happen in Southern Nevada, um, additionally to having the culmination of, of a lot of work that's gone into the, uh, property by the VA hospital. Um, and just, these are very big things that have happened, um, they, they're the result of a lot of people, a lot of staff time, a lot of work. Um, I, I don't want to name names, because I know I'll miss people, but I want to thank everyone that's been involved in these, um, here in this building and outside this building, because it's been a lot of work. Um, finally, I just, I want to, I've been to a lot of events for Chief Ojeda. I, I kind of wish I had opened a plaque business last week, um, because she's definitely helped several plaque businesses expand. Um, she's been a great leader and a dependable partner for me. Um, I can say lots of times, as I've sat and met with directors, um, and talked about different priorities- as I've sat and met with directors, and talked about different priorities that I have or different things that we're going to put in place and given deadlines. Chief is always... She's always first in my office with some... Usually it's in a three-ring binder, saying, "Here it is." She has just been a great example of getting things done. I've teased her lots of times whenever she... I'll ask something, and she'll just kind of look at me and say, "Come on, you've got a taser. You can do this," and she says, "No, they took the taser away from me." I don't know if that's true or not, that she, if she doesn't have a taser. I know she always has a gun, so I always kind of watch myself. But I've been very fortunate to have her on our team, I think, leading in many ways and showing us how you can be mission-driven and get things done. That'll be something that I'll miss. I'll miss that example around the table with all of us, of being able to take, whether it's things that we get direction in this room or whether it's direction that comes from my office alone. She is almost always one of the first ones to come prepared in doing it, so I'm going to miss that, but I wish her well on her retirement and thankful for her service to our community. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilman Churchill?
Yeah. Mayor, if I may, before we adjourn the meeting, you know, here we are already in January of 2022, and our state of the city is coming up in several weeks. I just wanted to remind everybody that our state of the city will be on January 20th at Aliante Casino Hotel, beginning at 10:30 a.m. So we look forward to having as many people fill that room as we can. I think the information that you'll be hearing and seeing then is going to be amazing, just like our approving the job creation zone over here just a few moments ago. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I think we've done the business of the city today, and if there's nothing else coming forward, then we're going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much for coming today. Is there... Nobody came up. Is there anybody who's wanted to come up and speak to the council on anything that was not on the agenda? Seeing none, now I officially close the meeting. Thank you.